Are we waiting for anyone else? Alicia?
Good afternoon, everyone. I believe we're still waiting for Sal. After he joins, then we will have quorum and he'll, he's chairing the meeting, I believe.
We have five members on, so I think we have quorum. But we just want to wait for Sal since he's the chair. I understand that.
Lauren or Alicia, could you reach out to Sal just to be sure he's trying to get in?
Yeah, I have, I have.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So I guess I'll defer to Chair Palachi to see if she wants to initiate the meeting or if she'd prefer to wait. Give it a couple of minutes.
He said that he's here in the waiting room. He just needs to be let in.
Do you see him there, Greg? Because I'm, I don't see him there. You're muted, Greg.
No, I don't see him in the waiting room. Maybe he's in a different meeting. I just forwarded the invite again to him.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, commuting in this weather, so give me a second. So let me know if you hear back from him, Greg, and I'll text him as well. He did say he was in the waiting room. Hi, everybody.
Sure.
Do you see him there yet, Greg? Okay, again, it's giving the same message that they, the person from outside our organization does not have access to some of the team's things. It's, it's.
I think I see him on here. Sal, are you there?
I'm here. Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, he's here.
I took a screenshot. I mean, it said, "Special meeting," etc.
There he is. Okay. You, you just popped up now. Okay. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. All right, we do have, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, we do, we do have quorum, so it'll be up to you whenever you'd like to begin the meeting.
Sure. Who's, who's here from the agency? Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Adalita Orfichi. I am the Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Public Health, and I'm joined by Nick Jakopowski, who is our Deputy Chief Operating Officer.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
I know that you sent the business case, I believe, the very end of December of '24, but I think it was the last day. We received notice on the 17th, and this was the soonest we could schedule this meeting, so thank you. Also, thank you for sending the business case. I think you did a really good job on it. I just have a couple of questions. And, and other staff may have other questions. This, we're not talking about privatizing any employees. We're not talking about a cost-benefit analysis because it's not saving money. And we are talking about a health and safety situation because we have a backlog, I think you said, going back to 2019.
Yes.
Right.
So you have a real need. And that's why I think with the transition plan, you said, you really, it's not applicable because almost all the positions are filled. This is just a suggestion, but and I'm glad you have the ARPA money, and I'm glad you have the ability to do this, but this is just a suggestion. But with the backlog going back to 2019, I would suggest that maybe you don't have enough staff and, and that maybe you would want to request more from the legislature.
We can't fund anymore based on our funding and what we get from CMS, so we wouldn't be able to fill additional positions. And the ARPA money would, because it's temporary, we wouldn't be allowed to bring on full-time staff with that money.
I, I do understand that. I just, luckily, you have that money. Otherwise, you have a five-year backlog, and that's a real concern.
The backlog, if I could explain a little bit, the backlog, the backlog was a result of, of COVID. So it goes back to 2019, and as you may recall, COVID hit in March of 2020. So the staff, you know, they worked through the complaints and CMS, which is the, the federal agency that, you know, we work as their agents in, in doing surveys for nursing homes. And these are about nursing home complaints specifically. They had paused all of our survey activity with the exception of our teams going into nursing homes during COVID to do infection control surveys. So we were working closely on that response. Because they stopped the work, the complaints continued to come in, but we couldn't actually go and, and work on them. By the time CMS restarted the regular survey work and we were able to focus on that, we had a backlog, and we're not unique. Many states, I think all states, actually. When, with time when we wrote this, I believe earlier this year, all states had a backlog except for one state, that was Rhode Island. So like every state, we're catching up. We're also continuing to hire surveyors. So as we explained in the, in the write-up, it does take time, one to hire and two to train. So we focused first with this money on an overtime project. That was really sort of where we started. Earlier, even before we had the money, we had been, you know, trying to work through, how do we get at the backlog? You know, we had been, you know, staff had even asked, can we bring in help? We had started to look at whether or not we could bring additional help like this. Ultimately, we didn't have the money to do it. When the legislature gave us the $700,000 in ARPA money to work on the backlog, our plan was to focus first on offering overtime to the staff. And I think that's been, you know, fairly successful. We've, we have a lot of people who have taken us up on that. We generally have, I think, the managers told me roughly 10 people who regularly are, are taking on additional overtime hours, so that's been helpful. And our idea with this plan is that we would continue that. Whoever wants overtime to do complaints would get that overtime. So the staff would have always first dibs on working on these complaints, no question. Even if everybody worked on it, though, we still wouldn't spend all the money.
Have you considered the 120-day retirees, because since they're already trained, people that left your agency?
We've already, we've been using them. We've exhausted their, their two-year stints. In some cases, we've had gotten special dispensation to bring them on for a third year for special projects. So as you may have read in the paper, for example, Athena, the Athena nursing home chain has been having significant issues. And we have had TWRs who have, we've been allowed to bring in for a third year specifically to help us with monitoring in Athena. We've also brought in TWRs to help with additional, you know, survey work, really from the, from the get-go. Because as we were explaining in our write-up, during COVID, we saw a 40% vacancy rate. You know, people left during COVID for a variety of reasons, but we also had the retirement cliff. So we lost a lot of staff there, and we were fortunate to have TWRs come back and help out.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask at this point?
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, this is less about the specific request. I'm just a little curious, from my own information. The complaints, I imagine some of them are terribly serious, just having some knowledge of retirement facilities. But how many of these are, just people are upset because they're in one and, you know, somebody didn't bring breakfast right at eight o'clock or something like that? I, I'm kind of curious as to the depth of the, of the, of the problem we're, we're dealing with here.
Well, there's some of that. One of the things that CMS requires us to do is to triage complaints so that serious complaints have to be done fairly quickly within, depending on the severity of the complaint. If it's, you know, not like food-related, but, you know, health and safety-related, I didn't get my medications on time, abuse-type complaints, things like that. We have a very small window in which you get that complaint, and you have to send somebody out to investigate it. With these cases, my understanding is a lot of those, we've, you know, when the complaints were on pause, when we opened them up, we tried to prioritize the ones that were the most serious and that sort of thing. And we continue to do that going forward. But there is some of that. We're also getting at some of these complaints while the teams are out on regular survey. So the nursing homes get surveyed roughly every 15 to 18 months. So our teams are, you know, constantly in the nursing homes, and the teams have started taking on two or three complaints as they're going out. And, and the complaints can be all over the place. Some of them could be like you're talking about. Some of them are more complicated, and it's, it's kind of harder, too, because the, they're old. So, you know, finding the witnesses, finding the right paperwork and all of that, some of them get a little, little, little more difficult to do.
Okay, well, I mean, what I heard you say is you, you have done a thorough job of prioritizing so that we're focused on the worst cases and, and that, for the most part, these are serious complaints, so it's not trivial. That, that was a bit of my takeaway from your comments.
Thank you, Jim. Lauren, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I do have a motion to put to the floor and my reasonings for it, but I just want to make sure that we're providing any union representatives the same opportunity to address the, the committee. I don't know if there's anyone here representing the union.
Yes, there is. Thank you for that, Lauren. Got ahead of our question. Would now, would now be a good time to do?
Yes, I'd like to give you the floor, please.
Great. Thank you so much, Lauren. So thank you, Lita, for the explanation of this proposal. We have concerns and would oppose going forward with this privatization move in the absence of several items that, items that could have been taken on by agency leadership that could have helped with providing staff more accessible opportunities to addressing this backlog. We have several FLIS staff on the call now, and they're going to talk a little bit more about this. It's also been a concern for staff. We just want to note, no union staff have been made aware of this proposal in today's hearing, including in a supervisor meeting as of this week. And we want to draw attention to some practices around the overtime that could have helped get through the backlog quicker and possibly prevented the need for contracting. Rebecca, would you like to share a bit?
Hi, good morning, or good afternoon, actually. My name is Rebecca. I work in FLIS. I am one of the nurse consultants that goes out in the field. I do do the surveys as well as I do help out with the backlog of complaints. My concern is, I didn't know that you guys were looking to even pri, to privately go out to get, contract people to help assist with this prior to Emily sharing in this with me. This hasn't brought, been brought forward to our staff so that the rest of our staff are aware of this. We are aware that there is the backlog. We're almost completed. There's only about 15 buildings left for the 2019. So soon, James said, we'll be starting to work on the 2020. But some, I think some of the problems are, is for us, as the nurse consultants, it's very limiting. We can only do a maximum of 10 hours a week. So for instance, if I have this Saturday and Sunday open, I can only do Saturday. I can't do Sunday because it falls within the same pay week. I'd have to wait another week to do the next 10 hours. And so an average complaint, normally, we go out, we do one complaint. It's an eight-hour day in the facility, and then about an eight-hour day to write it up and scan in all the documents and complete all of that piece of it. During the backlog, what they're doing is having us do two complaints at one time. So I'm going into a facility for the eight hours, and instead of doing one complaint, I'm trying to push through and get two complaints done while I'm there, interview their staff and whoever were involved in it. And then on another day, to actually write up any deficiencies, which would be state level at this point because they're so far behind. Not federally, it'd only be a state citation, and then scan in the documents and do the write-ups that are required. So for instance, because we're only allotted per management to do a maximum of 10 hours per week, for instance, this Saturday and Sunday, I can't get one full complaint of two done. So I can't go out on Saturday to the facility, get all the documentation, all the documents, do everything I gotta do, and then on Sunday, write it all up. I have to wait now until the following weekend to get that written up. So it's not, it's very difficult for us to be able to get these done in a timely manner when we're very limited to the amount of time we're allowed. The same thing is I, because I know for regular, regular time, we're not allowed to pick up on holidays. But for instance, this coming Wednesday, I would be more than willing to go out on Wednesday and do a backlog complaint, but I can't because it's a holiday. And management said, we can't go out on the holidays to do the backlog of complaints, even if we want to. Another problem is, and I think would also help encourage some of our staff, is we keep referring this as overtime. This is not overtime. This is straight pay. We're not getting paid overtime. I think some of the nurse consultants, if, and the supervisors, if they were told, oh, you're going to get paid time and a half to go help do this backlog and do double the work on the same day, I think they would be more incentivized to go out and do that because they would be getting paid that overtime. They're not getting paid that, because what we're getting paid is straight time. We are not getting paid overtime.
Rebecca, what is the limitation? Why can't you, why can't you work?
Our management told us we were only allowed to do a maximum of 10 hours per week. So if I want to do a Saturday, Sunday, it's in the same pay week. So I have to wait to the following weekend to put in the other day. So, because our pay period starts on a Friday and goes till Thursday.
Is it because you go over your hours and it would be time and a half?
No, because it's still straight time. So even though if I do the 10 hours in the week, so instead of my 35 hours, let's say I did 45 hours, all 45 hours will be paid at straight time. It is not paid as time and a half. And I think if we let them get the time and a half, more people would opt to do these. But they're saying, why, why do I want to give up my weekend and do straight time? I mean, and do these backlog of complaints for straight time? I'm not going to give up my weekend for straight time, is, is some of the nurse consultant's opinions on that. Where I think if we said, hey, you're going to go out on a weekend and do, help us with the backlog complaints, you'll get paid time and a half to pick up that extra shift, they might be more encouraged to do that. But that's never been an option for us.
Can you use ARPA money to pay overtime? I guess this is a.
That would be our management's decision at this point.
So we, we can go back, yeah, we can go back and look at that. I, I do want to apologize for not briefing the union in advance in, in, on our defense. It's, you know, we didn't, this is our first time ever doing a privatization type of request, and we thought that it would be like a 90-day thing, so we didn't expect that you all would fit us in this quickly. So we honestly just sort of kind of scrambled to get ourselves together, and I know that the union got invited at the same time. We got the notice, so we didn't really have time to sort of brief them. So my apologies to the FLIS team for that and to Emily. We, we would have done a, a better job. Now, we, we had talked about this previously in, you know, with, with the, with, with the FLIS team about getting additional help, but not formally in terms of a privatization request. In fact, I think it was the, the team that had sort of asked, could we, you know, find additional help to do this like other states are doing? We could certainly take back the, the overtime issue and the, and the timing of that. I think even if we did that, though, we still wouldn't spend all of this money. There's just, we can do the math, and we still would not. Our priority is to offer the opportunities first to the staff before contractors did any of the work. And even with the contractors, we would be limiting what they do, so we wouldn't be giving them the full range of what the staff does. The ideal would be that the contractors would do the investigation and the write-up, but anything around QA and the follows-up, follow-up with, with facilities, we'd, we'd stay with the FLIS teams.
I think I hear what you're saying. So the $700,000, even with the overtime, there would still be money left over, and you would still want to go after that backlog?
Yeah, yes.
Would that be, would that be something that makes sense, Emily or or Rebecca?
So, can I, can we, before we start looking into privatizing this, could we look into not limiting the number of hours so that if if a nurse consultant wanted to do it in a weekend and use two days to get it done in a week, they could do that and not be so limited that it takes us, instead of one week and going out on a weekend and getting a, and getting the two complaints done, it's taking now two weeks. So over the course of the month, I can only go to two facilities and do the two write ups versus doing four facilities and four write ups.
Emily, Emily, I'll get to you in a second, one second, but I I think that's what, that's what your management just said.
Yeah.
That doesn't look at that.
Though, look at that and then look as well as like these holidays that we want to pick up, because we are off, if we can pick those up as well. And then, can we also, um, can we also look at after our forty hours or after our thirty five hours, then getting paid the actual overtime as time and a half? Since you've got the money there.
Depending on your contract, right? So we would, we would follow whatever the contract says in the overtime.
Special project that, you know, doesn't necessarily follow the same rules?
Emily.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we would, we would like to entertain a stipulated agreement where, you know, right now, these workers can't receive overtime pay because of where they are on the pay grade, right? And we would entertain a stipulated agreement to uh, change that, acknowledging how how long this backlog has been going for and how there's a time limit on this money. Uh, we would like to explore the option for the time and a half pay.
Yes.
So if if we can come out of today with some commitment to uh, working on stipulated agreements to address the timing like Rebecca's talking about and the option for time and a half pay, that would be excellent, and I know Norma had additional points.
Hi, I'm not sure what's going on with my camera. Hold on. There I am, hi. Um, hi, everybody. My name is Norma Schubert. I am a supervising nurse consultant in FLIS. Um, I've been in FLIS for twenty five years. Um, I know FLIS very well. Um, I'm one of the union delegates and I know a lot about this backlog. In twenty, in November of twenty twenty one, I did um, probably a three or four page document. Um, trying to, you know, spell out the entire backlog, you know, measures to take the, that we could as a, as a section to try and curb it in twenty twenty one. Um, with overtime, with with incentivizing the staff. Um, at that point, there was a twenty eight, there was a round of twenty eight hundred um, complaint backlog. We had backlogged uh, recertification surveys, backlog hospital surveys. Um, we were backlogged, and um, the document didn't go anywhere. It went to Labor Management, it went to the Commissioner's Office. Uh, it was unfortunately was disregarded because at that point in twenty twenty one, if we had been able to discuss it, which I had recommended, that we sit down, that they sit down with the supervisors who run this section, who know this work, um, that maybe we could come up with a plan that twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, we're three years from, three, almost four years from that point right now. We may not have been at this point that we are right now, if we had sat down back then to try and discuss it. And um, so that's unfortunate. Um, what Rebecca said is is um, is true. The nurse consultants are not offered overtime. We are exempt employees. I understand that. That's our classification. However, um, and I understand that agencies are all important, but FLIS does very important work. We have a giant backlog. These are people who have serious concerns in nursing homes. The nursing homes haven't gotten any better. The nursing homes have gotten worse since COVID. Recertification surveys take longer, complaints are more egregious. Um, we could, we are uh, barely keeping up with the in the incoming complaints that are that egregious that have to be done within three or fifteen days. So this is very important work to get done. And we, as supervisors, uh, wanted to sit down with leadership to address this years ago, and we tried to talk about it in Labor Management. We tried to bring it up. We tried to, I tried to get overtime for the nurses to incentivize them. You can't incentivize people with straight pay.
Norma, may, may I make a suggestion? It sounds like in twenty, I hear your frustration in twenty one, but it sounds like there's, there is now seven hundred thousand dollars in resources that could maybe help in this situation. And so, um, my suggestion would be maybe for you to sit down with your management. And it seems like this is a core government function, really. And so it'd be better if um, unionized state workers did this job. And I don't, I don't think management disagrees with with that. Um, so maybe it's, it's maybe we met too soon, maybe it's time for you guys to sit down. And then if there's money left over, I would be amenable. Um, I think one of the things unions are always afraid of is if there's shared work with state employees, then then later on the state makes a case for privatization because they could show that shared work. So I think, you know, if if we take that off the table, um, the claim is not that there's shared work. See how much of the seven hundred thousand of the ARPA money could be spent? Um, bringing down this backlog, and then if there's money left over, I I think, um, we could look at that. We can. So I I would suggest you guys sit down and talk, and then we set up another meeting. If that's okay.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Thank you.
So, um, I I I know the money is time limited. So it, I I'd like to have that discussion sooner rather than later, so maybe we could set something up a month from now to see where we are. Does that sound okay?
Um, I think, um, could we make it um, six weeks?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, just out of, I, you know, for full disclosure, as you all know, the Trump administration is really impacting um, our work right now. So
Yes.
Um, we are um, trying hard to basically save public health. And so, um, it, our timelines have changed a bit. Um, fortunately, we're not hearing any rumblings right now from CMS, which funds the FLIS work, so um, we're hopeful that we can continue to keep this ARPA money and and move forward.
I appreciate that. Jim, um, Lauren, anybody, or Brenda? Is that, is that okay with you? Rochelle, if you're still on?
Yeah, fine here. That sounds good, and and make them in terms of the timeline.
Yeah, yeah, just so just so I oh, go ahead, Seth.
Go ahead, Lauren.
So, um, what I was going to bring to the floor, um, but I'm fine holding off for now. I do agree, it certainly meets the the definition of core governmental function, um, which if we go to a a a stipulated agreement that includes some kind of privatization, we'll need a two thirds vote by the board. Um, I'm assuming we'll do this like other cases where it's without prejudice. Um, and so that the union can come back and and bring a case again um, before any further privatization. Um, I wanted to take a closer look as a committee and as uh, as an agency at that the provision under forty sixteen Q, uh, nothing in this section shall be construed to apply to procurements that involve the expenditure of federal assistance or federal contract funds provided federal law provides applicable procurement procedures that are inconsistent with the requirements of this section. Um, and so I I only read that as, uh, so long as there's nothing in federal law that are tied to these ARPA funds, um, that would preempt or take precedence over our statutes, um. You know, we, we wouldn't have, we would have to consider it then, but um, I don't think that in this case, this is invoked, but again, I I think as an agency, we should just take a a quicker look at, um, or closer look at at that provision. Um, but as I understand the process right now, management and the union are going to look at a stipulated agreement. If it includes privatization, then they'll come back to us and we'll have a a committee vote and then elevate it to the board, correct? Okay, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Should we resubmit? Would that, would that be like, we would resubmit this plan and um, if we are able to come to a stip- stipulated agreement, resubmit it with the terms of the stipulated agreement?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, so so this is, this is off the table then, and we will um, resubmit and work towards six weeks, but um, if we could do it sooner, we will do it sooner.
If it takes you seven, if it takes you five, um, let us know when you think you'd be ready, and we'll set up a meeting as soon as possible.
Oh, great. All right. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I may, if I could just add, I mean, the analysis that you will have to do is uh, assuming a, you you do reach an agreement in a time and a half uh, type stipulation, you're going to need to project with some degree of confidence how much of, how how many time and a half hours you're going to get. And is that even enough to uh, to uh, cover uh, with the uh, with the existing uh, employees? My guess is not, at least I was hearing you suggest, probably not. But uh, that that needs to be, I think, a pretty rigorous analysis, so.
Yes, and I believe the union can assist with that process, I'm sure.
Yes, for sure. Lita, well, should we work with you directly to set up a date uh, pretty soon, it sounds like, to to work out these terms?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna loop in Julie and Adrian, and um, we'll include them in the discussion, so I'll have Julie uh, be the person to coordinate that. Because the well, Office of Labor Relations has to be part of any stipulated agreement negotiations, so um, we don't, we won't do that outside of OLR.
All right.
Appreciate that, Adalita, and we we appreciate the union too for for um, finding ways to reduce this backlog.
Yeah, they've been doing a great job. I mean, I understand, I, you know, I hear Norma and Rebecca's frustration. Um, but it is, um, they're not alone. This is a, this is a nationwide issue. Um, and the staff really has um, you know, pulled together and 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 worked hard to, you know, add complaints to to regular survey work, take on extra. Um, and and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's really been a team effort.
Great. That sounds really good. Um, anybody else? Okay, sounds like we have a plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Here, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn? Yes, no? All right. Think, think everyone's gone.
Everyone's gone, yep.
Bye.
Bye.